We'll call the meeting to order at 5:31. And let's stand for the pledge. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. And we would also like to take a moment of silence for this day in history. Thank you. And we do thank every man and woman that devoted their end due every day for our safety. Thank you. Adding and deleting and/or deleting items to the agenda. Did you have anything, Sarah?
No, I don't have anything to add.
Okay. I will add the approval of the, of using the ARPA money for the digitization. Put that as five. And as six, okaying the maintenance on the building for pressure wash. I'll make a motion to approve the agenda with those two additions.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And administrative matters, A, the signing of orders. The check warrant. For fifty-one thousand, three hundred, six dollars and sixty-five cents. And payroll in the amount of eleven thousand, seven hundred, forty-four dollars and seventy-eight cents.
Aye, second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
We have the minutes from eight twenty-eight. Make a motion to approve, approve the minutes, August twenty-eighth.
Aye, second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And announcements. If you have any announcements. I, I did want to say thank you to resident, amended resident, for putting in a lot of time, a big effort into fixing, cleaning our tombstones on Parker Cemetery. And putting a foundation under the monuments, slowly taking them apart, putting a foundation in, and then placing them back together with a, he made a tripod. So, thank you.
Thank you.
If you have any interest in checking out the cemeteries. It's amazing what he has done.
Who is it?
So, Val, what was his name?
Bruce Peacock. And he does have an assistant. I don't have his name. And we have public comment.
Do you want to speak, sir?
No. So, I, mine is more of a question about when, if there's a plan for the town to open, for the town office to open business as usual versus remote.
That's a good question. I think our next step in moving forward with that is securing the entryway for the employees in the office. We have, we're just coming up with a plan to put a secure wall in place for their safety. And right now, that's all I can give you.
Is there a restraining order against this person that was arrested?
It's not one particular person. It's just safety for the staff in general, being that the society we live in today has changed from years ago.
But are the others involved?
No, there are other towns that have.
Which ones?
I don't know off the top of my head, but I can find out.
Yeah, Nancy has.
I would assure that.
Yeah.
Because if there's a security issue with one particular person who's written in a newspaper and if that is wrong, the town should come in. And there should be a restraining order against that person. Because all of the taxpayers of many should not have to suffer because of that.
You're a hundred percent right. Unfortunately, we don't really control what the newspaper says. And we didn't put a statement out saying there was any one person. We just said due to security.
And the town is being fantastic. They're being very patient. We appreciate patience.
What was the plan for that? Was there a date or anything?
There's no.
We've actually had a contractor come in and start the process of getting the bid together, see how much it costs, you know. There are heat systems and air conditioning and electric stuff that has to be also put into consideration.
I mean, I worked at Cassius University, there were thousands of people that longed in and out, all the loans were open. And I'm not saying that's right or wrong, but I never felt unsafe. If there were someone that would make, make them feel unsafe, they would, rather than act a hall of us, they would take care of that one person so far, just curious.
Yeah, not necessarily. Any one, not any one particular person. It's just the way society is today.
My comment is, do we have a road commission?
We're in the process of, yes, we do. Have a road commission, a bill.
Bill will be up.
No, we didn't. He hasn't retired yet.
October.
October.
Sarah?
The goal is just a retirement by the end of October.
And how many, I know you have signed, I read when it came out to the newspaper, I mean, it came out to individual homes. How many applicants have we got so far?
Sarah, do you have an idea roughly?
Um, it is our goal to interview a pool of people for each open position. And I, I don't think it's necessary to divulge how many applicants we have per application until we're able to work through, you know, qualified applicants versus unqualified applicants and then, you know, work through the interview process. We're actively interviewing right now.
So, can I ask if there's more than one applicant for road commissioner?
Yes, so we are interviewing multiple people for each position. Each vacant position. Road commissioner, highway maintenance and equipment operator, and then the third position is highway maintenance and buildings and grounds.
That's just my concern on my road. I know.
What road is for a lifetime?
Come on, here, come on.
Oh, okay.
But the bottom of our road, it's a pretty short steep area and goes right onto Route Four. And I know Arnie Small and Rick's belt just couldn't stop him and saw, you know, Route Four. And I know Bill's always done a fantastic job of sealing that very bottom of the road so that there's never ice there and never go sliding. Because it's super dangerous. You know, like at that traffic study for the many in Florida. What Jen is saying is that on the survey we've done most recently, eighty-eight percent of drivers are speeding. So, with the speed limit being fifty there, and when you come out of that road, most of the time they're doing sixty, even more. And it's a one lane, so there's eighteen wheelers. And, you know, they're going. I mean, they're happy.
Well, Bill is, Bill had made a comment. He's challenged just pulling his truck out of that road. Because you need time, you need time to get out.
You do.
It's terrifying.
It's terrifying.
Mm-hmm.
So, I'm just hoping we do get a road commissioner. We'll get some nice.
Yeah.
We are too. Yeah. And I did make a note of that. So, we'll speak to Bill about that also.
The other thing that I was particularly about, I wrote that it's on like an annual maintenance program with the town is to brush cut at the end of Jermyn's End, where Route Four is looking east. We should brush cut all of that annually to prevent trees from growing up so that the roads have a better view. And so that they can see us on the road.
Right. Just visibility all the way around.
Sarah?
Yeah.
Question. Route Four, brush cutting of Route Four, is that the town's responsibility or is that the state?
So, technically, it's not. But we have, the property owner in that area is Rutland City. And we have obtained permission from Rutland City to go onto their property to brush cut and maintain visibility of Route Four.
Okay, thank you.
The town of Menon only has control over the town's right of way, which is approximately twelve and a half feet from the other road in that location.
Thank you.
You're welcome. On the street.
Yeah. I'm new to it, so I like to ask so that I have a little more information on it. Thank you, though, for that.
Because I saw the state working on a culvert and I asked Jen if it's not a property and got in touch. And I knew it was Rutland City because of the election. They didn't give us permission.
Thank you.
Hey, guys, can you hear me?
Yes.
Yes, we can hear you, sir.
Okay, I was in charge. Just a question on that brush cutting. Does the power line is on that side of the road?
I believe so.
Can I ask?
I'm, I'm not aware if the power lines are on that side of the road or not. We have to look.
It's on the other side where the guardrail is that got crashed into recently over the past year.
Does it cross over right over there, though?
What's that?
It crosses over right about there, isn't it?
It does not cross over at the end of Jermyn's End.
No, no. But in that area, general area or no?
It might be up there.
Okay.
But it's past that house. Or we're right at that house. But they brush cut it before. It's just that.
Yes.
I think it would be nice to be in annual maintenance or the highway department, just to keep everybody safe, even including the fathers.
First question for you, whose property is that?
Rutland City.
It's Rutland City, okay.
Yeah. So, in the past, Bill has requested access to maintain the visibility of Route Four from Rutland City and has not had a problem gaining that access.
Allow to call it that?
Correct.
Okay.
When we call, every time I try to call it, like, it's very common.
Where?
It's the town office.
Oh, okay.
There's always an answering machine.
Well, it's here, I guess. It's been close for years.
Okay, yes. So, I called Monday, which, which was the last voting day was on Monday, Tuesday. So, I called on the Monday to find out where the voting was. And an answering machine comes up. And I love the message from the one calling that. I love my email that's on the phone to go and find out where the voting is. But is it possible that when the water opened, that a human can answer the phone?
I don't see why not unless they're in the middle of something and, you know, I mean...
Well, I think Nancy and Jesse are doing a great job.
But it sounds like, if you call there, it sounds like every time you call, it's the answering machine. Because if you want this one, press one, if you want this one, press two, if you want this one, press three.
Well, yeah, that, I mean, I call there quite often because I don't come here for every single thing. And I do get the...
Answering machine?
It's not an answering machine. It's a directory, like, to direct you to whoever. If you press zero, you do get Nancy nine out of ten times. She might be, you know, using the bathroom or something. If you press whatever Jess's number is, you'll get her. As far as pressing anyone else, if they're not here...
I just really know who I need to talk to. It's like, I would love to talk to somebody and say...
Well, you know that Jess and Nancy are usually here, so those would be the two you would pick. And then, I mean, if you're picking me, I, we're not on there, but like, you know, someone else, they're not here. You know, those two ladies are here, right?
Yeah. I mean, Steve, Steve's not, I don't, I don't know who else is on the directory.
Yeah, those, those people you would message.
I email them, they respond to me very timely. But I like, I'd be in, I'd ask them, though, hotel.
Well, I, I...
If I have a burn permit, I'd walk right in. If I need to make my taxes, I like to walk right in. Friday, I said, oh, I need to make taxes. Hey, Jessie, wouldn't you pay that? And she said, well, this is when I'll be there. But I couldn't make it, so I was at work. You know, so it was like, that's what I was curious about, when we're in the open business as usual, so if I need a burn permit, I can walk in, actually get, it's kind of old school approach, to get a piece of paper, fill it out, hand it right back to them.
And you know, we're online now with burn permits, right?
Most people like human interaction.
Yeah.
I mean, I don't know what business you can call anymore. And I sit there and I say, I just want to talk to a person.
Amy and I like talking, right?
But I, I can, I can send them a message. And let them know that it was brought up in the news.
Can I, can I work through the girls in the office, too? I mean, they're, they are, they have the info, definitely. There's a lot of home calls that I get. So, if they haven't gotten back to you, then, you know, I can mention something myself. I mean, Jessie's my wife. But I, you know, I don't get a call back sometimes.
That's true.
Oh, I had, when I did...
They are busy.
When I did come in to vote here on Tuesday, because I didn't know there was a Monday, Jennifer Goddard and Karen, we're talking about how they wish they were male people there on Monday night, because only thirty-four people showed up to vote from town meeting. And I said to them, oh, there would have been one stat sandwich boy, probably got two of them, thirty-nine people. And the response was, well, it was at the town highway department. Can't say it. And for the reasons to the flag, you know, we honor our veterans. We should be able to get as many people as possible to vote. Another thing that I would love to see is Australian ballot for our town budget. Have all our voting on Tuesday. I mean, and this is naive to me, and even people that I know that live here and live on my street and stuff, they, they didn't even realize that the town budget is voted on that Monday. So, if you're not there, you can't vote. The only budget we have on Tuesday...
I'm going to ask, because I'm relatively new to the month. Is that something new that they changed it at currently? Now, it's on Mondays, the voting for the budget? Or has it been like that historically?
That's what I'm, that's why I'm admitting my, that I'm naive, because I don't know.
But how many?
It must be, it must have always been that way.
Sarah, is that...
Yep. Historically, Menon has always voted their budget from the floor at town meetings, which is the Monday night before Tuesday's town meeting. We have presented it to the voters multiple times to go Australian ballot, and it's been voted down at least twice in the last, I have to look up the exact date, for probably five to six years, we've asked them twice to go Australian ballot, and it was voted down. We do typically have anywhere between forty to sixty people at town meetings that are voting the budget. But that, you know, as the last few years has been under decline. Covid certainly affected some of the attendance at town meetings. But, yeah, it's, it's voted from the floor, and the school budget is voted by Australian ballot.
So, there were thirty-four people that voted on Monday, and how many people voted on the Tuesday? Was it a hundred and one?
Oh, I, I don't know if there were thirty-four people that voted on Monday. I don't have those numbers in front of us, but...
I checked my email before I came tonight that you sent me. I had asked.
I don't think, I probably didn't send you an email. That probably came from Nancy.
Okay, Nancy sent me an email.
So, yeah, she's the town clerk, so she would be doing the minutes from the town meeting. And so, she would have had the numbers. But, yes, we typically have more people that come to vote on Tuesday for the election than we do have in presence on Monday night.
Which makes sense, because you can come from eight to nine o'clock. So, about six, seven.
Yeah, roads are always open from eight to seven.
We are on Monday night. It's very restricted. So, if you're working, or if you have sports events, or something, we need to, I'm just looking for more opportunity for everyone. I'm seeing the Ron and Pass that we could get down or put through.
Did you hear that, Sarah?
Yeah.
Okay.
I, I'm sorry. I'm sorry, I didn't really read it. I'm, I'm trying to understand what, what is being asked.
The, another chance to have the town budget voted by Australian ballot.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, I think it was two years ago it was voted down again. Anything else? Okay. Under business, letter A, recreation, field maintenance.
Hold on just a second. Val, I do have a pejorative.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Brian, do you have your pejorative?
Hello?
Yes, we can hear you.
So, I have a comment.
Hi, Brian.
I'm calling.
Hey, Brian.
Good, thank you.
So, I have a comment on a ordinance, the ordinance four oh two seven. It contains about stormwater and divergence to a neighbor's property causing damage. I think we need to change the wording to that ordinance to any water. Because in our, the way it's read, any neighbor could hook up a hose to their well water and flood their next door neighbor's property. Or use a well for a plant. Or there's water stuff there. Just any water.
So, I think Brian makes a pretty good point here, actually, that we're, I read through that, and it really doesn't make sense that you can have surface water or drainage is a problem for the ordinance, but well water or somebody draining their pool, so to speak, or anything.
Yeah, hose, from the hose, coming from the well.
So, I think we should look into adding that, just adding well water and spring water as well to that, to that ordinance.
Can I ask a question? I don't have the ordinance in front of me. Surface water, would that be a hose that's now leaking, that becomes now surface water? What constitutes, I'm, I'm just asking because I do not know. What constitutes surface water? Any water on the surface of the land? And well water, is it leaching from underground or is it bubbling up and now becoming surface water?
So, Lisa, well, water is, you know, like a drilled well, okay? Do you have a drilled well at your house? It's water you use for your house. Same with spring water, there's springs, some people are still on them. Where there's vacuum pipes to their, their house, okay? So, that would be well water, spring water. Surface water is just natural drainage. It's water that's on top of the surface. It's water that comes runoff, you know, streams, roots, I guess even. So, there's an ordinance, the ordinance states that you cannot affect a neighboring property by diverting water, which would be surface water, okay? So, say you were building a home, you need drainage around it, you send a bunch of water to your neighbor's property, and it causes their foundation to be wet or basement to be wet or whatnot. Now, the problem we're repeating here is that somebody could drain their pool, and people do it a lot now, I mean, like hot tubs, pools, whatnot. I mean, they could turn a hose on and just run it, and that's not considered a problem. It's not in the ordinance.
Okay, that, that's...
Or, or like a homemade pond or something, you know, that somebody is feeding off of their well, they could do that and then the runoff, since it was not down to the neighbor's property, and it would be okay.
So, surface water wouldn't be something man-made, like, from a hose? And it wouldn't be something that is underground, a spring? Because, like, yeah, all right, I got it.
Exactly. It's not the same as from the pool.
No, I'm gonna let it by. That's all right, I'm good.
Well, let me just provide some information about the process. So, the zoning regulations are created and adopted by the planning commission. Any amendments to the zoning would be spurred by the planning commission, and they would have a public hearing and adopt amendments to them. Then they turn them over to the select board for them to conduct public hearings as well and adoption. Once the select board adopts, then they go into effect, if they are not petitioned, in sixty days. So, they need to be petitioned for town vote, to go to town vote within forty-five days of its adoption, and then it would go to, it would be in effect in sixty days. So, lacking that petition. So, if the select board wants to make a recommendation to the planning commission that they take a look at this and consider an amendment, that would be, that would be the course of the action if you agreed that what you would send over to the planning commission.
I mean, I just think, when I read it over, it just, it seems like that should be in there as well, you know?
Do, do you want to make an amend, a recommendation for an amendment, Seth?
I do.
Did he freeze?
Yeah, he, he...
He froze.
So, Seth...
I'm like, he's frozen.
Yeah, he's unfrozen now.
So, he's up there.
I agree. I'm in with it.
Seth, we can draft up what Brian was stating and yourself, and looking at the exact wording of the, of the ordinance as it states, and come up with some wording that you would like to see in there, and then the... and then the select board can review that at the next meeting in order to formally submit it over to the planning commission.
Would that be, would that be just like a sub of that ordinance itself? Would that just be added to the?
That, they'll do the research about that. So what the select board would be doing is stating to the planning commission that we see this discrepancy, and we believe that it should be clarified, and then we put it in their court in order to do any research that we might not be thinking about. So they can work with the regional planning commission in order to prepare an amendment if they choose. They may have other subjects on their, on their radar that the next time that we amend the zoning regulations, that they would be doing further amendments. I don't know.
Okay, I just think it's something that should be addressed, and I thought we should do something from there. And that's that.
Any other comments, Brian?
No, thank you for at least thinking about it.
All right, have a good night.
No, I have another last comment. Another question, I think, Seth. I'm wondering what we're gonna do about the end of the town lane? Clean it up like four times for free? And Bill's come up here about five times for the driveway next to mine. Is there anything we're gonna do about that? Or are we just forgetting about that? I thought we would do something about that two years ago.
We are drafting another letter to have another surveyor. Have the Pasqueros find a surveyor. Sarah, is that correct?
That was, that's two years ago.
If you could just send us the paperwork.
They can just send us the paperwork, so I'll just, yeah.
So guys, can you, can you inform me a little bit on that? Because I wasn't here two years ago. Is that a, a surveyor?
Oh, this is. So the property line is in dispute, and the neighbors do not want to cross property lines for the maintenance. But the driveway at the end of the road definitely needs ditches on either side of it to direct the water appropriately into the ditch line and not come out in the roadway.
So Seth, the property line was never in dispute. The first contract that they had come up with, this idea was to divert the water onto my property. And I was like, no, I don't think you can do that. That was, that was the issue, wasn't it? I don't really care with the property line in it, I just wanted to take care of the driveway. But I don't want it to dump, I don't want it to use that property to dump the water. They'll need to get a survey, and just keep it fixed to driveway.
So we had, correct me if I'm wrong, did we, they already had a contractor? I think I remember the town.
Yeah, they had a contractor.
Deen Cola, maybe?
I'm not sure, but they came over and outside, and I went out, and I said, what's the plan? And he goes, well, we're gonna break down this perimeter, we're gonna dump the water over here. I go, that's my property. And he's like, well, then, I said, there's specs for this job. There's supposed to be some ditches on both sides, blah, blah, blah. And he was like, yeah, whatever. And that was that, and that's been the mess. But the driveway's just like three foot stretch and four. I don't know, do you see the pile of dirt that I've handled or took out? But the greatest thing is that you can never access that.
Where does it not get up there, and do it through the driveway?
For the last year, they haven't been there in, oh, a buddy year. There's a vehicle up there, it's not coming down.
This driveway's been up for a long time, right?
Well, it just didn't get a permit, I don't know how they ever got the permit.
There was no permits when the driveway was put in.
Yeah, so it shouldn't be there, carry it.
So, so let's see, I mean, what are we gonna do to resolve? Do we have, so we're gonna draft something else about for the property board?
Was that the first step, Sarah? They were to have a surveyor come back again?
The John Ray property, yeah.
That's the first step.
So yes.
Well, I mean, it is a problem for our.
With that a lot, we've done a lot else in the coming two years, real quick. I'd also like to see Ron, the employee, back in the, back in the town office. He should probably help with answering the phone stuff.
Anything else?
No, everybody have a nice day.
Thank you, have a good night.
Thanks, Brian. So I am a little concerned with that one too, guys. I've been listening to some of this stuff, and it's, I mean, that pop of our road is getting pouted, right? I mean, just, you know, sure, Matt Colby's our, our turnaround there. And I know this has been going on a long time, but I was asked to look at it years ago. Do we, so we have to have a surveyor then? Is that what we're gonna, just leave it?
The information that we received was that the contractor was not to cross over the property line at all, and it was undetermined exactly where the property line was. So without a survey, we will not, you know, the Pasquero and Trejo driveway would not, the contractor would not know exactly where the property line is.
Okay, gotcha. So the Gates don't know where their line is either, and then it's just all the other side, correct?
I still don't know where the property line is, I actually marked it for them.
Did you mark it with white flags by chance?
No, I did not.
Oh, okay. How did you, how did you mark it, Mr. Gates?
Because I basically know where the other end of it is. And I, I go, just think of everything that, I don't care if he even fixes his driveway a little on my side. I just don't want the water runoff coming onto my property. That's all an asset. I don't care where they go to driveway. You know, it's gonna be where it's gonna be, and where it needs to be. It's not supposed to be there anywhere, because there was never a permit for the driveway. So there shouldn't be a driveway anywhere. And if they're gonna fix it, I just don't want the water to burn as hot as that car.
I understand that a hundred percent.
Correct me if I'm wrong. Brian, correct me if I'm wrong, but it's gonna have to come down, you have a culvert at the entrance of your driveway, correct?
There is.
Well, it's possible, from what I remember of that place, it's gonna have to go through the culvert, correct?
Yeah, that would be fine, but nobody, I cleaned out my culvert, and every culvert after that was spot stolen, I'm sure. Every single one of them.
Yeah, that should be addressed. But.
There's no ditches anymore, because all that driveway filled with ditches from that culvert. You know, and I keep cleaning out the, I keep spinning out the grease that Bill installed at the end of that, like, the other side of the driveway, and it's supposed to get all the water. But the, but the driveway keeps going. You know, he made, he made burns on one side. And the, and the driveway filled with cement, like I said, bags of cement. They just poured bags of cement and crap, and put water through it, so it's all dead. For the last two years, it's been active, it's been harder. I know he has written stuff up to do it, I don't know why not. There's no zoning violations, there's no reperfection whatsoever. But I have fixed the, I have cleaned up the road on, I don't know, almost half the time. You know, because I stayed up for two weeks, you know, and I could suddenly drive off the driveway on my bike.
Okay, so, so I did, I did look at it the other day, and I mean, what they have to look at is if Brian hasn't been cleaning it up, and Bill doesn't make it up there cleaning it up, which he's been doing as well, and just think of what it would look like right now, you know? So it is a problem, they gotta address it one way or another. It'd be nice if we could activate it a little bit quicker, but. I mean, if Brian wants to sign something in writing, or would these owners, would that be a possible thing?
That's between the owners, that's not, the town of Menden is not involved with that.
Right, I'm just trying to give them an idea to move forward towards that, you know? So with you on the survey, the homeowner?
The homeowner needs to do the survey. I mean, that, the responsibility here with the town amendment is to make sure that they follow our highway specifications. And we need an access permit in order to work within the town driveway and to make sure that they're not diverting water to the amateur town highway, which they are doing.
Right.
Their driveway needs maintenance. They, we had a contractor that was gonna perform maintenance, and in which that contract was canceled, because the property line could not be determined. Is what we do.
Can I ask a question, please? Have we sent any, whoever would do this from the town, to write them violations for having their water, their surface water coming onto town property? And have we sent them bills, bills for every time that our staff has to go up there and maintain their, not on their property, but their driveway material is running onto the road? Have we sent them?
No, I can, I can send out the highway specifications to you guys along with a copy of the access permit, so that you can see what their responsibility is for you to do now.
Right, and what I'm asking is, is there, at any point, have we ever in the past sent out a, I don't know who does it for the town, but someone of authority to write a violation towards them, or whatever you want to call it, for having their surface water, according to ordinance 402.7, coming down on to the town property now? Have we sent anyone physically to write them a violation?
Yeah, so they received the letter from the town.
So, but is it a monetary violation? Or is it just a letter saying you need to do A, B, and C? And when did we send that letter? Six weeks ago or seven years ago? And if it hasn't been done very recently, maybe we should start getting on that also. If they're not, I understand there was an issue two years ago or a year ago, and I understand that fully. But we've now, it's now a year later, six months later, nine months later. You know what, I'm gonna just let things fly into the road and not have to take care of it. I'm gonna let my garbage roll down my driveway into the road and let somebody drive by and pick it up. This is what he's doing, is the homeowner is taking their property and having it dumped onto town property. So the taxpayers are now having to pay for Bill to take time out of his day to go and clear that road. And thank you, Mr. Gates, for doing that. And unfortunately, it is not your responsibility, but thank you so much for doing that. But Bill, as an employee of the town, is spending time on something that a homeowner is causing Bill to have to do. Not an emergency, it's not a flood of magnitude proportion of the July whatever day, or Irene, or any of that, this is on a daily basis, whenever it rains. So what are we doing as a town, as the main office?
Good point, Seth. I think what we're gonna find now, the new normal, I think you're gonna find a lot of people who will take advantage of the town in that exact manner. I've seen it, and there, you know, this guy, this has been going on a long time. It's pretty obvious that they don't really care much about the driveway. I assume they aren't up very often.
But they also don't care about the taxpayers of Menden, obviously, because it's costing us money every time Bill is taken away from something else to have to go and take care of that driveway. Not the driveway itself, but the product that's pushed onto the road. And that's how many hours? I mean, that's not right. It's just not right to the taxpayers of Menden.
Absolutely. Now, Sarah, did you say, you said there wasn't permitting when they built this driveway? Is that what you're saying?
Correct, they built their house prior to our highway specs being in effect.
Now, when they repair their driveway, they have to follow the highway specs when they repair it, correct?
Correct, and they are allowed to allow water to come down and affect the highway.
They are armed.
Are not.
Right, right, in the new specs.
In your driveway.
All right, so let's see what happens when we send this letter. We sent it or we're sending?
Sending another.
So let's, let's send the other letter for the surveyor and give them a deadline. You know, you have thirty days to respond with some kind of answer, whether it be you have a contractor in contract, or you have a surveyor coming up on this date. You know, they give us a date, and, you know, and then let's get the ball rolling. What'd he say?
My father's zoning violation.
I think.
I don't, we don't, the select board does not issue zoning violations. That would be Steve Ellin is a zoning administrator.
I think it's more like Lisa's saying, we just gotta, we need to stay, we need to enforce and stand up for ourselves as a, as a town, you know?
It is a violation of the zoning law. And it has been for over two years. I brought it to you, it's happened to almost everybody in town.
Okay, how about this?
They have to spend a couple of times. Obviously, this zone driver.
How, how about this? We send the letter with, with the zoning person's recommendation in there that if it is not rectified within so many days, or you don't come up with a plan within so many days, violations can be issued.
Like every other zone, it should be seven days, just like every other zone driver.
The select board does not have control over, over the actions of Steve Ellin. So you can sit down and discuss this with Steve.
Discuss it with other zonings. The administrative level, man, drive.
It is the wheelhouse of the, of the zoning administrators, not the select board. As far as the driveway.
About the three different zonings administrated about it, and nobody.
Brian, Brian, you're gonna have to talk with us, you're gonna have to speak with the zoning administrator. That's just the, the way it is.
I have on three separate occasions, that's.
We just can't, we can't do anything about, about, we can speak, you know, we can speak with Steve. But, so this situation here, let's do that, like Lisa said, I think she's got a great point. And who, who actually does that there? Would that be, would that be you, or is that just Jess or Nancy, or, I mean, Bill?
As far as what, sending another letter?
The letter, yeah.
Yeah, well, the letter will be drafted by myself with input from Bill, and then it'll go to the select board for approval and sent. Yeah. I will forward everyone a copy of the last letter that we sent to them.
Thank you. Okay, thank you.
Can I ask one question? How, that's the road that's being affected. How is it that the road commissioner, is it that part of a road commissioner's job? The roads, so wouldn't he be?
And he is, he is involved.
And he has to go through zoning to enforce?
No.
No, go ahead, Sarah.
He doesn't have to go through zoning. The, the last section of zoning that we were just talking about, about surface waters running onto somebody else's property, I think it's a zoning violation that, that.
You were talking about.
Brian is talking about.
It's all the, the rocks and cleaning up stuff that would be road commissioner. work.
In our highway specifications, and in our highway specifications and state statutes, um, you cannot direct water onto a town highway. Um, that's already in statute. And so our highway specifications, in our ordinance, says that you cannot direct water onto a town highway or damage a town highway. Um, and in order to fix the problem, uh, they need an access permit in order to, to perform construction within the town driveway.
Did that answer your question? I don't think that was her question. I think her question was...
I mean, what if it's not water? It sounds like you're cleaning up a lot of stuff other than water.
I think she's saying that Bill is aware of this and Bill is involved in the process of trying to get this rectified, correct?
Yeah.
Yeah, he is.
Bill doesn't work on the driveway.
No, no.
No, no, but from what I'm hearing, it's affecting our road, because we, so you're right. Like, if Bill keeps cleaning up, it's taxpayer money, because he has to clean up the road with all the rocks and the sand and this everything coming down. So that's the road part that I'm thinking of. I'm not thinking of...
No, he's definitely, he's aware of the situation. He's working with Sarah and the select board to manage it.
Yeah. One, one other thing I have to...
Quick, please.
Okay. On Journeys on Road, I don't know if you've ever been out to Suzanne, it's not so many go over the bridge there on Journeys on Road, the red drivers, that's paved, that's all sand from now on, and according to Suzanne, that was all supposed to be paved and finished last November. And I know they were cutting trees this summer down there for the after riding. So I'm wondering, is there any plan for when we are done finishing Journeys on Road?
So that was the grant that we did not get, Sarah, is that correct? Are we reapplying?
Well, we have the grant. The, in line, yep, yeah. So we are looking for funding sources for it in addition to, but, um, it will, that construction is still planned, it's just not gonna occur this construction season, it was pushed off to next year. Um, while we also seek further grant opportunities to perform additional work. But if, if there's an erosion control, um, project that will be installed with hovers at the end of the road in ditches, as well as reconstruction of the road base in order to pave.
So the two years ago, when we had the grant money for that road, that didn't include, um, everything?
Yes, we have with the Better Back Roads Grant that helped, um, pay for some of the erosion control measures.
But not all of it. Thank you.
Letter A, under Business, Recreation, Field Maintenance, Playset Project.
Um, we, I mean, we received an email from the Chair of the Recreation Committee, Liam Frack Monroe, that had some questions about the maintenance of the ball field. Um, and he's requested that, um, I'm just reading his email, um, how the Rec Committee can take over the mowing again full-time with the equipment and resources we have in place for them to use when the volunteers have time to use them. We need only access to the mower on a regular basis, um, non-business hours, and gas and approval, um, that get reimbursed for gas. Um, so, we have discussed with Liam, um, multiple things, that, um, we have put a plan in place to mow the ball fields with town employees that are covered by workmen crew. Um, the struggle has been that we've had a vacant position, and it has put the, um, we've been short-staffed on the road crew, and it's put the, um, responsibility onto the remaining highway department, which has become overwhelmed. Um, there were a lot of issues this summer with, um, with mowing the ball field. We hired a part-time employee to mow the ball fields and the cemeteries, and he was only available, um, on Fridays to perform this work. And if it rained on Fridays, it would not allow him to mow. So, um, we certainly got behind in mowing the ball field. Um, Liam has stated that he mowed, um, a few times this summer and, um, and Dan mowed a couple of them too, that's our part-time employee. But we definitely had an issue of mowing because of the rain this summer and the short staff of employees. Um, in addition to that, um, you know, there is some concern about storing the lawnmower in the sheds at the ball field because it, um, previously received damage due to infestation of mice get into the shed and then they chew through the wires in the lawnmower. So when we put the new lawnmower, we have not stored it in the shed at the ball field. Um, the Recreation Department also fertilized the field for the first time this year, uh, which helped it grow and, um, actually...
Excuse me, was that done by a company? That was done by a company, correct?
Yeah, a licensed contractor, yep.
Okay. I just wanted to make sure.
Yeah. So Liam wanted clarification with this and, um, you know, it's, it's my recommendation that the town still maintain the ball field with town employees for my own purposes, but that can be discussed by the select board. I certainly understand his frustration, though.
Can I chime in? You feel, uh, the field, I know we're, I know we're short-staffed, uh, but feeling, so if we feel like the new hiring will, will do, and we'll be able to handle this and cover it, and we can keep it...
Oh, absolutely, so...
...point, so it doesn't cost as much overall in the end, because that field, like, like Liam stated, and he's right, the clay's grown over with grass in the infield. Um, to me, it doesn't make sense to not protect our, we put money into the ball field, um, I know from personal experience there, we volunteered many times just to fix it up, but I think as a town, we should really be focusing on these places like that, like our ball field, even our piece of property we have behind our four response.
Oh, yeah, no, absolutely. The, we created a full-time position with the road crew in order for, um, you know, part of that position to handle building ground maintenance, and that's exactly what their responsibility is supposed to be. So, you know, we're in the process of hiring, so hopefully, once we get somebody on board, this problem, this would not be a problem.
Yeah. So that position hasn't been built since Dad passed on, is that correct?
Since Chad Elliott's been there, yeah. And we, I mean, we hired Dan Henley part-time to help with coverage, but that's not the full-time. You know, we need the full-time employee to, um, perform both highway maintenance for that third guy and buildings in grounds. So previously, we had contracted out, um, you know, the work to different volunteers or to contractors, um, but we found that we would be better off having a full-timer that invested with the company, or, you know, is invested with the town to perform both highway maintenance and buildings in grounds. Otherwise, we have a part-timer on the road crew as well.
Have you ever looked in, just asking here, but have we ever looked into subcontracting out the, just the mowing aspect, you know, maintenance, maintenance with our, with our guys, but, I mean, it might even be more cost-effective?
So it wasn't, especially for the cemetery. So the cemetery is extremely costly because of the, the man-hours of mowing. So, um, it had been a number of years, but that's why we switched over. It was one of the driving forces, I'm switching over to creating that third full-time position.
Gotcha, yep. Second.
Um, so, some other, um, questions that Liam had was about the, um, was about the notch road and when it was gonna be fixed, and that has been completed at the end of last week. Um, and then he also had additional questions about when we were filling the open positions on the road crew. Um, again, currently, we have one open position on the road crew, and we are interviewing for two additional positions that are expected to retire later on this year. Um, so we're actively interviewing them, um, right now. Um, he had some specific questions about how many of those have we interviewed to date. Um, we are interviewing multiple people for each one of the positions, um, but I, I don't think that the town is at liberty to say exactly how many people have applied and how many need to be interviewed, um, because some of them are non-qualified to fill the position. Um, and then if, he asked if we had a plan for the upcoming winter with respect to plowing, and, um, yes, our intention is to have a full-time road crew to, um, perform plowing. Let's, there was, uh, a comment made at a previous meeting that we would hire a third party to follow those if needed, um, and he had a question about that with a past imperative, and, um, I think the town's answer there, if the select board does not have, you know, further comments, is that the town is willing to do whatever needs to be done in order to properly maintain our roads. Um, we are actively pursuing, uh, handling the roads with town employees and town equipment that we have in place. If at any time that the town finds themselves short-staffed and is un-gugable to safely maintain our roadways, we would look to private contractors to, um, fill that. Um, so I think each one of you received this email from Liam, so if you have comment on any of his purposes, um, we can respond back to you.
No, I, I don't, I don't have any. I mean, I think you've answered his questions.
I've just had, I just had one statement. I have a goal to try to like bring our roots back here in Menden. Um, I think we just, I think we just need to be more of a tighter-knit community here. Um, and I know it sounds like a pretty, uh, pretty heavy goal, but, um, I just think if we put a little more into things such as that, or allow volunteers, um, I'm, I don't understand the liability issues there, but, like, if, if people are volunteering to make our ball fields look good, if we could get away with doing that and having those people involved all together as a community, I'd say go for it.
So, yes, Seth, we do have a concern about liability and maintaining the ball field in, um, in volunteers and cleaning it up or raking or whatnot, um, that is not necessarily an issue. Having them use power equipment becomes an issue because they can get seriously injured, and we have a cap on our liability insurance to protect them. And so we would want our residents to get hurt on our lives, on our wives even.
Absolutely.
So that is a careful balance between the liability of volunteers. There is a difference with volunteering at the office and helping us, you know, do a mailing or run an event, and, um, than it is utilizing power equipment to perform a project.
And also, um, volunteers constructing and, and doing construction of any type as a volunteer, because if it's not done properly, who's liable for it? Now, the town becomes liable for something that may not have been done correctly. So we wouldn't ask volunteers to come in and put walls up for us or anything of that sort. That would have to be done by someone who has liability insurance and, and workers' comp insurance and everything that's required by the state of Vermont in order to do business, correct, Sarah?
Correct.
And I, I'm a big advocate of volunteerism, believe me, I can give you the list of places I volunteer. But when it comes to the safety of A, the volunteers and B, the town, as far as financially, I have to think of that first, and it is more important. We do live in a society that people sue for everything, so we have to be careful as a town for the people.
Um, in addition to that, we have plenty of opportunities where, um, we would accept volunteers to perform a number of projects. Um, so if anyone is interested in volunteering, we can certainly find something for them to volunteer with. Um, but the, the, the projects that are being suggested, either with constructing the playset at the recreation area or utilizing power equipment, puts the town at great liability.
Gotcha. What if those pushboards are just dead?
Anything we're playing will cause serious...
There you go, yeah, okay. No, point, point paper, point paper. Like I said, I just have to think of all the parts.
Yeah, and that's what happens with that. We certainly could do a lot with volunteers that are not, um, you know, they can help clear trails and they can help, um, certainly maintain the field, um, and it should look nice, and we should be proud of our recreation area.
I definitely need people to help me train that little snow trail behind the ball field, the ski, the snow, um, snowshoe trail.
I heard that's a lot of private property.
Yep. Now, they can't be using a shovel, right?
No, they can't.
Right.
But we can, last year, I picked up a heck of a lot of brush by myself, and would have been nice if I had some volunteers to walk with me picking up branches and stuff like that.
Can't say we can use services?
Absolutely. I mean, I think even, yeah, I mean, we're getting on to different subjects here, but I, you know, I think we could, we can make a community day of it, kind of like what we've done in the past, where I mean, memory, whatnot, you know?
Well, I, I mean, on the agenda, we did have field maintenance and the playset project, so that is in line with this discussion that we are looking for volunteers in order to maintain the trails and the, and, um, the appearance of the ball field to take to alleviate, um, some of the work for our highway department and that building in grounds personally. It's just, there's, there's certain projects that they'd be able to help with and others that they cannot.
Right, right, absolutely.
Yep.
Brian, you had your hand raised? Did you have a question, or did we answer your question?
Uh, no, we're all set. We just have a gate with that set about getting the community, yes, together.
Okay.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
May I ask a question about that recreation?
What's your question?
So the field maintenance and playset project, is Liam citing that he had volunteers to do it, and we're saying he can't, that the town's gonna do that? Is that what that issue is? Like, why does it say field maintenance and playset project? Is that what he says?
He had, go ahead.
They've already bought it and it's been installed?
He had, um, two questions about field maintenance and about the playground playset project.
Did they already buy it?
It's, it's in contract. Yeah, we saw him in the contract and everything. Um, and his questions were...
Who's gonna put it together?
Right, the company's gonna put it together, so...
Oh, okay.
Yeah, and the field maintenance was obviously what we just discussed now.
So when we talk about recreation, did you guys get in love with it, Menden or not?
I was not directly.
I wasn't here at the time.
Okay. Because the two priorities that came out of that, number one was to improve outdoor recreation.
Yes.
So, you know, I'm with Seth.
And we have, this winter I toured a volunteer snow shoeing program.
Right, but the one thing that concerns me is we don't have our town office open. Uh, and now we're having, I mean, we have issues with not having enough employees and maintenance and all this. And yet, something that really got to me was thirty-four people voted to give four thousand dollars to the Smith of our community center. Well, if we can't take care of what we already have to keep everything open and running and hire enough people all the time.
And that is a point that we did bring up.
Why are we going to open up a community center when we need to prioritize on what a lot of people who showed up with us? The number one priority was outdoor recreation. I would rather see my tax dollars go to the recreation and have great, because I followed the little boys down the street to all the baseball fields. And um, I think we should have much better. I would rather see all my.
Yes, well, to respond to that, Susan, is um, the town of Menden had um, upwards of three hundred thousand dollars in ARPA funds.
Yeah.
In which we dedicated fifty thousand dollars to replace the place gates at the, the ball field. Um, there was a question on whether to have volunteers construct the uh, place gate. And the select board went under contract with the uh, manufacturer to um, provide the place gate and install it. And that was based on, you don't rely, it'll be purposes.
Yeah, that's true.
So that was part of Liam's question.
Okay, thank you.
Moving on, any other questions? Um, the cemetery update, I did already touch on that, but again, um, Bruce and I had spoken about the volunteer, um, or having volunteers again. Once, once he and his assistant had a system um, underway where they felt that they could give volunteers little jobs on their own. So when I hear that they feel it's safe and productive to have other people help with the stones, um, we're also looking for volunteers there, but that's all I have with that. Um, moving on to see the flooding event update from August, more of the storm.
So I'll provide an update about that. Um, first, um, the FEMA process, um, I have previously reported that Addison County had reached the threshold of over one point one million dollars in order to, for the governor to request a separate declared disaster for the um, events that happened on August third through the fifth, I believe is their um, is their damage period. Uh, they have quantified for their county, Addison County. Uh, Ruffin County had four towns that sustained damage during that period and Ruffin County has not yet qualified for assistance. What this means to Menden is that we don't have, to date, we don't have approval from FEMA to assist us in the public assistance program for any of the flood damage that occurred on the notch road and Wheelerville and up into the Falls Road. Um, our estimates are approximately a hundred and sixty-six thousand dollars in units. Um, the status of each project, so the notch road culvert was repaired, temporarily repaired last week. Um, there's still watch out of the ditch line on the notch road. Then Wheelerville has a number of different um, locations. There's two miles of ditch line and road work to be completed as well as um, armoring of, or clearing the debris from the, a couple of large culverts. Um, this is all from the intersection of Wheelerville Road, the notch to Bridge Fifteen. And um, Bill and I are working on the scope of work to go out to bid with this project, which we, we looked at that we didn't go to, um, before we interviewed. And so it is, um, we interviewing and creating this scope of work is, is not part of our initiative right now. And that's it. You have any questions regarding the projects from this form?
I do not.
I, I don't have any.
Sarah, have you spoken with Bill at all about like, um, how much we can do in house? Because I'm assuming at this point, the more we can do in house, the better off we would be, correct?
So some of it we can, as far as the road base, um, you know, filling in the, the uh, filling in the road bed in order to bring it back up and doing the surface gravel on it. What would be difficult is to repair all of the ditch lines. As you know, we only have access to the backhoe and that we, we, um, you know, that's ditching two miles of Wheelerville Road.
Right.
So some of it can be done in house and others not. So instead of having to sit down with you and go over that scope of work with you.
Yeah, absolutely.
Yep. Um, and then this will go out to public bid.
May I ask a question about?
Um, sort of somebody else talking there.
No, go ahead, Seth.
So one more question for me. Did I miss how we're going to try to pay for this?
No, you did miss it. So um, these are repairs that are necessary. So we will pay for it out of the bridge and culvert fund for the, you know, the culvert portion of, and then the highway improvement fund for um, resurfacing. Some of it will come out of our general fund budget, which um, you know, we have a budget for gravel and some maintenance. So yeah, it's um, it will redirect some other projects that we were going to work on.
Yep, gotcha.
To re-prioritize everything.
When we, the town of Menden, to work on Wheelerville Road, and I'm not sure about the notch road, but because that's the Ruffin City watershed area, do we get money from that to help us maintain that? So they are watershed area? Because they own a lot of property here, don't they?
No, Ruffin City is a taxpayer, just like you are.
Okay.
So they pay taxes in order to um, maintain services in Menden. And so, and that's a class three road, so the town of Menden is solely responsible for maintaining the roadway.
Okay, thanks.
But they can get a tax bill.
That's good.
And that's all I have for you guys.
Okay. And that's everything with number two, three, and four combined?
Yes.
Okay. Um, in number five, we added, um, we had pre-approved fifty thousand from our ARPA funds for the digitization of land records. Nancy wanted to um, just have a twenty-five thousand nine hundred fifty-five dollar amount approved um, by COT Systems to begin, within that, within that fifty thousand, she just wanted to re-approve that dollar amount.
Yeah, so if you could just make a motion to spend twenty-five nine fifty-five out of the ARPA funds designated for digitization of the land records.
I will make a motion to approve um, twenty-five thousand nine hundred fifty-five dollars quoted by COT Systems um, from the fifty thousand dollars designated for the digitization of land records.
I second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
And secondly, approving a um, a fee of four hundred and fifty dollars. We had two quotes. The second quote was seven hundred and fifty dollars. Nancy and Jesse would like to move forward using the four hundred and fifty dollar price to pay for the work. Um, it's a routine maintenance for pressure washing outside of the building. So I'll make a motion to approve uh, four hundred and fifty dollars routine maintenance for the outside of town.
Um, and Belle, if you could just add that's out of the town office maintenance fund.
Okay, approving um, four hundred and fifty from the town office maintenance fund.
I second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Any questions?
Can I ask one more question? I will come back next time.
No, you can do that. This is great.
We're going to get lines on Town Line Road, which are very yellow lines in the middle and white ones on the side.
Sarah, did you hear that?
Yes. The lines on Town Line Road?
Yeah, we're getting any of them?
Yes. So uh, Town Line Road is a class two highway. So the state of Vermont actually um, takes the line. And um, I, I'll have to look to see what, what their schedule is. I don't know when their schedule is on Town Line Road.
They have been out and about. I was glad that they did turnpike because that's, that was a little dangerous there.
Why should we take that?
Well, they did the bottom. They did the highway and just, it's a nice separation.
Do we have a date on when we know the uh, the Route Four safety meeting moving in?
So I'll, I'll handle that one again. So um, we are looking at um, beginning of October. A date has not been determined yet, but should be finalized by the end of this week. And then we'll start publishing that on our website, social media, Facebook, Front Porch Forum, and posting it in and near the town office. Um, what she's talking about is that we're in the process of doing a Route Four scoping study for the beauty of Route Four, um, as it relates to pedestrian and bike, um, bicycle um, traffic used. It's a transportation alternative program grant. And we, uh, we're under contract with an engineer, a U of C, and they are considering alternatives at the next public meeting, which could be held the first week of October.
Okay.
I have one more question. When I was talking to you about the safety of Journey's End and that sign that's just a T, and we were talking about how metal light does the flashing in one thousand and feet, you know? Who, how do I go about getting more alertness, more signage, more light there? Do I go to the town? Do I go to the state?
So Sarah, did you hear that, Seth?
Yeah, yeah. So that signage is regulated by the state.
That's V Trans.
Yeah. That's V Trans. Um, I don't know if the scoping study at all is going to address that issue or, or not.
Well, one of the number two priorities that Menden and I worked was the root ball card is safety setting. As you know, between Clean Hill and Journey's End, we had two people rally. And then we had one more up, you know, the fourteen.
They do study the statistics at the entry of Route Four and all of these other roads and that is um, how they determine what signage um, is put out on the road. Is that correct? I mean, Bagley had sent um, those statistics to us last year, the year before. I mean, is that's how V Trans works? Is that correct? The scoping study, they would give a portion of the road more attention?
Yeah, correct. I mean, we're, we're doing a number of things to try to increase the safety of Route Four. One, we do have controls, law enforcement controls to slow down the speed and make sure everybody's driving safely. But we also um, have requested from V Trans to lower the speed limit in the, in specifically the village district from forty-five miles an hour to forty miles an hour and have not heard back on that date. Um, we wanted to request that the speed limit be reduced in the fifty mile an hour zone, but was um, was informed that that's a US highway and that um, the purpose of the US highway is to move traffic and that we're not going to be able to lower the speed limit in um, the fifty mile an hour zone. The Route Four safety scoping study was another pursuit um, in order to increase safety of Route Four. And that hopefully, but that's going to be geared towards um, bicycle and pedestrian path traffic, not necessarily vehicular traffic and specifically speeding traffic. Um, as far as the, the multiple fatality accidents on Route Four, the two that occurred this summer, um, a main cause of those accidents or those fatalities was not wearing a speed belt.
True, same thing with the police officer dying was news ago.
Correct.
But you know, if you go a little slower and you fall hit.
One, one of those was a medical, uh, medical.
Well, they said the doctor's wearing a hockling. They don't know what happened. Nothing I needed.
So at the town level.
I'm not, Sarah, I don't, you know, mine, I just, I'm pretty sure you've noticed too, with V Trans, they have a different way of looking at it, different than I would have thought. Um, they change the speed limit, they don't feel it's going to change anybody's speed, ultimately, in those big areas where the road is two lanes or wide open. Um, they made a good point saying, well, what do you do? As soon as you keep the road wide open and you feel safe and you got a lot of roads, you go fast, right? So I don't, I, it seemed to me, I don't know about you, Sarah, but it seemed to me that we aren't going to get too far to change the speed limit.
Well, I think you have to be a squeaky wheel.
Can I ask a question, please? Um, have we considered a traffic light or, or flashing light or something along the stretch? Because from the beginning to end of Menden, there's how many traffic lights or lights? None. Is there any way, I mean, like at um, Park Lane?
You can request um, traffic lights be installed, but it, it needs to be done based on the feasibility study.
Correct.
So that would be the responsibility of the town to perform that feasibility study and make recommend and present that to V Trans. You know, the state of Vermont is in charge of Route Four.
Correct.
So we don't have control over what signage or what um, traffic calming devices are installed on Route Four. What we can do is advocate for increased safety of Route Four. Part of that is um, the maintenance of Route Four, especially in the wintertime. Um, and then part of that is, you know, we've, we've allowed these dangerous intersections as well. You know, the town of Menden. know, the town of Mendenham approved these, um, roads to be coming out onto Route 4 in particular areas. And, um, there's limited visibility.
Correct.
So, you know, Route 4 is not a new issue. It's not a new issue this summer. Unfortunately, we've had three fatality accidents in a very short period of time. Um, uh, we have, we have identified Route 4 as being, um, a dangerous stretch of the roadway for multiple
Well, I'm not saying today, but maybe in the near future. How would we go about a scoping study and stuff like that? Maybe we can discuss that and maybe I'll, we can discuss it, Sarah.
If you don't mind.
And I'll work on something with you.
Well, I know David Deary has a lot of information on the local regional planning because he sent me the information. The state actually and the city, they, they do this. And because you're part of the Vermont city and centers, you have access to so much of this. I mean, they were the ones.
I'm not, I'm more than happy to help out. I am not familiar with any of it. So I would have to go, go by Sarah's guidance on that and then her send me where I need to go and do it. I have no problem. I may contact you. What's your last name?
Nina. I'll give you my phone.
That's even, not now, after the meeting. That's even better.
I would, I would, I would suggest anybody, I mean, we're still in the middle of that study. Um, I would suggest anybody, Sarah, can anybody cover it in at the next one or was that just the?
Yeah, no, the, the alternatives are going to be presented by the engineers and that is a public meeting. Um, so that will be advertised in town for people to attend. It's just, it's, the discussion is not going to be centered around the accidents on Route 4 or, um, the, you know, how to make Route 4 safer. It is, um, you know, we received a transportation alternative grant for this project. And they're specifically looking at how to make Route 4 safer for pedestrian and bicycle traffic.
So reducing the speed would ease our region, say?
Well, uh, we, we don't know what's in that study, correct? Until they produce it in October.
Well, so the engineers have been working on alternatives and they're going to be presenting those alternatives at that meeting.
And that's that meeting in, in early October?
October.
It's going to be the first week of October, but a date has not been determined. It will be determined by the end of this week.
And these, these studies have been going on as well. What did they say? Sarah, the, the average speed of a person on Route 4 is 60?
Eighty-eight.
What, 60?
Eighty-eight percent of them.
Yes, 88% of the speed. But then I, I said, not, um, I did attend those meetings online. I was away at the time, but I did attend it. Yeah, I, yeah, I know what you're talking about. But, um, it's good to hear it again. You know, because sometimes you don't hear it the first time, the second time, or third time. You, you hear the numbers and it sometimes amazes you.
Yeah, yeah. And I don't, you know, I'm just saying, I don't know how much we're going to get from this. But Sarah said bicycle and pedestrians, which can help a lot, I believe, and it makes, makes it look nicer. But, um, we might look into things ourselves as far as the buildings, right, Sarah? Are we allowed to, like, those, those trailers, with the speed limit sign and the flashing lights, like the lead guard lights when they're going too fast?
Yeah.
We don't.
Oh, the speed limit thing is definitely something that we should take a look at. And that can be paid for by ARPA funds or, um, our public safety, um, fund. Uh, Chip did install two of them after, um, they received ARPA funds. And they're approximately $3,000 a piece. Route 4 though, we have to go through V-Trans.
Like, they do have one of those signs that says, it's over by Medway. There's a sign, um, coming up the hill that says, "Slow down, you're in Vermont" or something like that. Vermont, slow down.
Oh, yeah, yeah, that's a state sign.
Uh, it's, so we, we can't put a sign on state road for the state road. So we can't have a sign that directs them and tells them, "Slow down" or anything because we don't control the road.
We have to get permission to.
Yes. But, um, I'm going to be honest, that sign goes zero because nobody reads it. Nobody sees it. And they're, you know, and, and that's just the fact of human nature. Um, people see it once and they go, "Oh, yeah, 35 miles an hour." And then, you know, and that is human nature. I think the scoping studies are, are best bet here to see what they decide and.
I must say, putting in the rumble strips was a fantastic idea for Route 4.
And the fact we had, we had thought for those for years. So, um, we, there was a lot of crossing Route 4. There's a lot of confusion in the wintertime. That middle lane, is it, is it for going up or coming down? And prior to having rumble strips, they installed signs that had two arrows going up and one arrow going down so that people could visually see if the road was covered with snow or salt. Um, and the lanes were obstructed, that you would visually see that there's two lanes going up, one coming down. Um, but the rumble strips did help prevent a lot of those crossings into oncoming traffic.
Right. Did that answer enough of your questions?
Yes. Is Brian, does anybody know Brian Sanderson, who's still the sign guy with Vermont?
Oh, he is, he is the technician with the District 3. So yes, we can contact. Yep, we still there.
All set? Any further questions? We can join this meeting at 7:14.